This conference will now be recorded.
To the speaker, which should go. Read this and then sign it here and fill out a form here with the signature. Okay. And then Michelle. Go. Whoever wants to go first. Okay, you want to start, Ray? Just read the package because I do solemnly swear.
Do you want me to stand up?
You don't. We just like to go ahead. That's up to you, okay?
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State, and that I will well and competently perform duties of supervisor for the Island Community Improvement District, on which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
Fantastic, congratulations. And Michelle, you have yours, though? You can just read that, please.
I do solemnly swear that I before and protect the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I do fully comply with the regulations of the State and that I will well and competently perform duties of supervisor for the Island Community Improvement District, on which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
Okay, congratulations. Now officially a part of, what I will need is a check from both of you for $10 made out to State of Florida or Florida Department of State, however you want to call it. With that, Mr. Vice Chair, you ready to cut the roll?
Yep, okay, now take over.
The meeting's called orders. Ms. Holloway.
Chief President.
Ms. O'Connell.
President.
Mr. Jensen.
President.
Mr. Fish. And Mr. Davis was not here. He's at a stop meeting at the Kaiser three yesterday. And the record will reflect that the district manager, the engineer, David Schmidt, Robert Soto, Ms. Gilbert, and via phone is Chris Doudak and Nancy Doudak in attendance. So. We call the roll. Born in the new Speaker's room. After any election or closing of a vacancy, the Board reorders. And that's my case then. You have a copy of a resolution in the package. And so we're at that point where we would look at organizing through the Board. And right now, the current chair is Mr. Davis, vice chair is Mr. Fish, my staff, and my media, my staff, Jennifer North, the vice secretary treasurer, assistant treasurer, that all the board members, the assistant secretaries. And usually that's where things are now. We'll make a change right now, but that's up to you. Is there any nominations for the chair person for this board?
Could I? I remember when I first started coming to these meetings a long time ago, the board members would take turn. Change. I thought it was a really great idea. But I also remember, and I get it, that they didn't want to do it. It was an unpopular thing, but it's a great learning experience.
I like to get back to that.
I'd like to get back to that, I think, for a few reasons. But I just think it was a really good experience for everyone to learn. Really, really doing it changes the face. Having said, I'd like to nominate for the chair.
Okay. All right. Are there any other nominations for chair? All right, vice chairman then would be, and what we'll do is, since there's no other nominations, we don't have to vote. I'd love to say there's one, but there is no other nomination, so we'll just insert his name.
I let you run the meeting anyway. Can I say one other thing that I forgot? I think that, on your behalf, I think it's unfair, not intention of the board, to expect you in the position you're in as director of the business. I think it's unfair that you're also up to be the secretary, and you also were monitoring the inventory meeting. I, even more unpopular position as secretary. But I do think that one of us, someone's going to do it, should take that off of you and be the secretary to take the minutes. Or we should even have somebody separately, only to take it off of you.
Yeah, well, see, in every district, I'm the secretary, I do it. And I've got a reporting secretary that actually prepares them all. She'll listen to the tape, she'll watch the video, and then she goes off my notes, she prepares them all. I review them to make sure that they're accurate, but it's not a big concern for me.
Okay, it's a lot on you, you know, a lot of different actions.
And then treasurer is, Jennifer actually does all of the books in her department. It's just, I sign your checks. But, I mean, if you want somebody else, that's fine.
No, no, it's not a matter of wanting someone else, it's that, this is going to sound, but I have really high expectations, and you're in the key position, whether you like it or not. You manage the money. And I just, I have always felt it's unfair for you to have to wear so many hats when your expertise and your focus is being the director, which is a big job in here.
Well, I got very good people that provide those services. Vice chair, are there any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Mary.
Okay, are there? Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, so, since there's no other nominations, you've got Revolution 2021-01, and that is to establish the Board of Supervisors, the officers. Chair would be Mr. Fish, vice chair would be Ms. O'Connell. Then the three from my staff that would be secretary treasurer, assistant treasurer, and the three assistant secretaries would be Mr. Jensen, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Holloway. Okay, if that's good, we would entertain a motion for the adoption of Revolution 2021-01, naming the officers for the Port of the Island CID Board of Supervisors.
I show. How's that going?
Okay, call in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, your meeting, Mr. Fish. You want me to go through it? I can, and tell your, a little more.
Yeah.
You just tell me, if you're meeting.
I'll go through it. I don't have anything, and nothing to add before we started. I have one question, sorry. We're not supposed to vote on last meeting, we weren't, I mean, we weren't part of last meeting, right?
Well, you have to vote.
Oh, okay.
That's just on anything, the only time you can't vote would be if there's a conflict of interest. So, but you would rely on the two supervisors that, you know, they're going to verify if the minutes are good or bad, or if there's any changes.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the agenda, is there any additions or changes to the agenda? So we need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I propose a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a sound? Call in favor.
Hi.
Are there any comments from the audience regarding agenda items on the agenda day? This is, any item on the agenda, you can speak on. If it's not on the agenda, then it would be at the end of the meeting, when there is audience comment. Any comments? Okay. Then that would take us to the minutes, and you have two separate minutes. One is the last regular meeting, and the last one is the opening of the bids for the water meter. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay. If there are none, you can approve both with one motion. And I would entertain a motion to approve the October 16th and the October 23rd minutes as presented.
I sent this motion.
Uh, who is my favorite?
I missed that one.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Call in favor.
Hi.
All right, utility operations, Mitch, you're up, buddy.
All right.
Did you press that button? That's just a packet of this.
The water plant, the AC, is running fine. The AC units, they were installed in the increase room, everything's perfect. The AC computer is being built at BCI, they've been back there a couple times, getting some information, so that something will be installed, I'm sure, within the next thirty days. The wastewater plant running pretty good, according to contact. The well field, I think I told you at the last meeting, we got the number two well pump replaced under warranty, that's been installed, so all three wells are running. The fire station generator has failed, and the board is with something that couldn't be, shouldn't be replaced, so they don't make it anymore. But we actually, still you're telling them, we pulled a generator out of that water plant, and it was the same board, so why put it in there? And it's running now, and it didn't cost you anything but a few hours' labor. So the fire station generator is back up and running. But in the future, we'll probably want to look at replacing it. But it doesn't have to be in the near future. So, the reuse system, everything is working fine. The meters, we switched out the meters, back roads, we're replacing handles, we've been getting several calls for handles and the rest in the way. There was a hole on the handle, we could get something to do with it from the virus, they want to fix it, but anyway, we got it fixed.
And fire station pump? Yep. Is there, what's the back?
No, it wasn't.
But is there backup? Is that got redundancy or no?
It does not have, well, it is a redundancy, it is a backup. It is a backup. So, the main pump systems that's the plant, you know, if it fails, we run out of water, then it automatically parts over on the canal. So, that generator had failed, but we can run a portable over there and plug it in.
The generator, you're talking about the generator with the last week?
Yeah, by the way.
And that failed in Irma, too, and you have to bring in a portable?
Uh, no, because that one wasn't even used during Irma.
Okay, but, so that one was okay?
That one was okay. It was, it was during Irma, it was the, the power died, and now it blew the covers off of the generator during the well field.
Oh.
And not the power out there. Affordable to well field during Irma. And when we had, during Irma, we had the starter that failed on Irma, that started, fell on the big one, which we replaced.
How old is that generator?
That one over there, yeah. Around eighty or ninety, did it have a leak?
What kind of fuel is it? How often? I'm not leaning on you, I'm just, I just need to know, how often do you fire it up?
That one gets started once a month.
It does?
Once a month.
Okay, and the fuel is, the fuel has a protective in it?
Yeah, we put conditioner.
You do, okay.
It wasn't?
Why do you?
No, the board went.
Oh, the board, yes, that's right.
The control board.
How big?
Uh, it's pretty big, like over a hundred feet.
Oh.
I think it's either eighty or a hundred, it's big, that can happen, yeah, so.
I didn't realize that was a big deal. Do we have a backup? How much is it full?
It'll weigh, that was.
I was just thinking.
Retrofitted generator was like eighty grand, so it would have been, and money ahead, like, so, that's what we were doing, we were getting both the new ones, and then we put one house and built your, you know, that generator, we just brought the parts out of this, put those shorts, and it changed it by some inches back there. You can get some other parts, like starters, the engine parts, with the circuit. That's what it's on. So.
Yeah, Mitch, I might have missed it, did you talk about the AC in the control room and the data?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Any other questions for Mitch?
Wait, okay.
We put two and a half, I think, when I, two and a half or three? I don't know, I think they were three, because we, we had spoken with a gentleman here in Orkney Cove, but he's recommended switching to two and a half, and so I've been at the meeting here, really, I'm like, one minute, nine, and we're going to need both of the drifts, we move the things on.
Okay, so it's two or three times.
Anything else?
Well, just that last thing, distribution, says you received several requests from your research.
We all, we're all kind of high, we all.
Oh, okay, all right.
Come out, so I believe, we're receiving water.
Okay, I just wondered.
We're looking at, 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 at,[1054.62]
They are, um, at, uh, we call it bottom of the pit, they've broken all pieces. They need to serve greater metal, uh, for, uh, we shot. We have to put a fifth next from the provider of electricity to the bus to be able to be strong. That's one child, uh.
If you look at page twenty-five, which is part of Chris's report, uh, item six irrigation. You've got pictures of what, what Robert is talking about. So it might be easier to visually see what the condition.
It, it's an easy fix, but you have to start from the ground up. Uh, the, uh, every, every, uh, rebuild, rebuild. Um, I stopped by, I got the caution tape, there's no caution tape around this. The last caution, the first caution, right? I looked at it yesterday, uh, on Monday, uh, and then we're in caution now. I did get a verbal number, I told my guy, if there's some permits required, I'll let them, we have to set a date. Let me come out here, this is our, and that's their, right? Now, I do sum it up, and, uh, maybe it's a number that he, whoever he gave me, put in twenty-five hundred dollars involved. So, you know, just open to whoever, like, that's why he was a contractor and started to pull up that bad.
Make sure next time you get a shut off, that we can aim that, make a power.
Can they, can we put a brand with it also?
Or they want to do?
No, no, I know there isn't one now, but you can't, I mean, second air position, you've got that main shut off on a house.
It's not gonna be, uh, okay, it's gonna be, I'll show you. I gave you, uh, you say it first.
You can't put a.
Your meter comes from right here, shuts down, and right into the main break of on. So all the power, the main power comes into that break of on. A little different. So that's why, that's the whole, that's what we came across, like, yeah, is it, does it actually know who you provide?
What's it, oh, it'll break it back. What's it, what else, that's fine.
It supplies life, where the community right there, it supplies the main power life medium. So it does supply other big stuff around it. And, uh, we're just, that's how we found out, that's our irrigation problem right there, okay? So that's, that's how we went up there, wanted to call, wrote it up, the report, just wrote it, and split right half. What would it try to replace this? That's, but it gave me a window of, of, that's a new box and everything, that's, so, uh, all the way to, uh, I would see, uh, and that's how I, I said, I will go off of that. And, uh, if you guys ask somebody, and try to, uh, do the bit, um, but, I mean, I, 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 but I'm being polite.
Yeah, no, no.
Like, like, but, it's totally, now, it is a required, it's a required, and we'll make yourself, uh, sorry.
Begin rebuilding, put a new piece from the bottom, and that's fine.
Oh, yeah, so you look at it. So just wanted to, uh, make you guys know on that. Um, the captain, I want to, wow.
Uh, just to say, hey, Robert, uh, is there interest in proceeding with that? Maybe you could approve a natural seed? And then, uh, you know, natural seed, say, three thousand, we'll give the, Robert will give us a formal bid. He'll also get a second bid from another contract. It's hard to get people out here, but, uh, so we'll, we'll get the best price, but if you just give us a natural seed.
That's, that's, yeah, I don't think it is, yeah.
Oh, no, no, I read it.
Yeah, I hope we get that second bid.
Uh, Chris will, yeah. If he can.
Okay. Hey, we're close to the town.
Yeah, yeah, you got a public guy closed, yeah.
You should put in a heliport, it's closed.
Yeah.
Uh, we got, uh, when, uh, there is, there is.
Um, yeah, if, if that's your group, we need a, uh.
Not to see three thousand, and to get a second bid, all, oh, I'm second.
Uh, that's great.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, the captain said that, um, that did four hundred months, how had, you know, trying to make it up, I'm talking, there's some fifty or five months. Really? So, I said, not having any worries, here's the, uh, so I should be, uh, getting there, and keep, uh, following, uh, the, uh, so, yeah, we're rolling in a bunch of, uh, stuff.
That became September.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's the kind of.
If we approve anything, we can send it to you. I mean, we typically don't do that. That's not a problem.
Well, like when, uh, after you submitted the financials to us and there were additional invoices.
Right.
Charges that came through for the month of September.
Mm-hmm.
This is the one time you can backdate.
Right.
Because the year ending has not ended.
Mm-hmm.
Have you been doing that? And if so, I thought we were gonna get a draft that this month.
Uh, typically, we don't. We can send you, uh, I mean, if the board wants it, we can send you. I mean, we, we don't do it in any community. That's, nobody's had an interest.
But we're, we're.
Okay, if you would like, we'll send you a copy of the, uh, closeout that we sent to the audit.
Yeah, because I'd like a feeling of if it's changed and by how much has it changed. You know, before the audit.
Okay, so September financial. Those was in the.
Yeah, actually probably adjusted.
Yeah. And they're still un-audited, but.
Right, yeah, right.
Other than, we use two CPAs that we have on, on staff just to check everything. So that I've got a, a solid level of confidence.
You have that with me?
Huh?
You have that with me?
Oh, no, we do. I'm sorry. No, I didn't mean it that way. We do have two CPAs so that, uh, uh, we run this through both our, uh, former auditors. So municipal auditors. So, uh, anyhow, any, uh, other questions?
I just want to point out one thing. It drove me crazy until I actually slowed down and read it. On your, uh, I think it's your trend report.
Yes.
Uh, it says for the year ending, September twenty twenty-one. And that's what the report is for the whole year. But the other one, even though it shows annual budget, is only for the month of October, through the end of October. Is that correct? Because it's the period ending October.
Yes.
Your other one is for the year ending September. Which is okay. I just want to make sure everyone understands why.
October is the only actual. Everything else is, says budget, but we call it forecast at the end.
Right. And I wanted everybody to realize it isn't an annual report. That one is just through the month of October.
Right.
Your operating reserve, I don't know what I'm asking. Your operating reserve is, is a hundred three thousand roughly. Is that like two months reserve for operating?
Uh.
A little less?
Probably. It depends on which fund. In the general fund, it's less. Uh, the, uh, general fund might be fifty, sixty thousand. With the enterprise fund, uh, it's a little more. It's, uh, you know, not the pick on Mitch, but, you know, the utility contract for operations, that's, uh, thirty-five thousand a month.
Yeah.
So.
Thirty-five thousand will cover it?
Yes. Per month.
Yeah, yeah, but that's.
Yeah. Yeah, and you're operating three utilities.
Year round, winter too. I mean, the average is thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Average.
Yeah. And that's with repairs and everything. At the, the actual contract's twenty-five thousand, but then, you know, there are mainline breaks, whatever, so.
I have two questions. Um, yeah, bond pay. When's the last one? Is that January? Oh, not till May?
Yeah.
Because we stretched it.
Okay.
It's been May every, no, not because they stretched it, but it's been May every year.
When we pay it, it's May, okay.
We pay interest in November.
Twice.
And that's, so you pay interest twice in November and May, and then you do a, a principal also in May. And in May one, it's paid off, and the, the board has always indicated that, uh, once that's paid off, that the, uh, assessment would be reduced. And I, Supervisor Powell and I just had a discussion on that the other day, and, and, uh, it's, it's, could be a sizable reduction.
Okay, I got, I got one other thing, and I don't know how it's related to this. Do we pay, we must for the water kingdom plant, we must pay as a community, a fire tax, you know, like, like we do, what's?
On the real estate.
On the real estate, right. We pay that, right?
Uh, no.
We pay that for our houses, but who, who's covering, uh, if anything happens?
I don't know. We're assessments. We're a district.
Well, not a.
Okay, that doesn't work like that, okay. All right, because I'm just wondering when our, um, last time we had the fire chief here. Is Ochapi gonna be incorporated with the rest of Greater Naples, right?
Yeah.
They're working on it. Part of the problem, mine, I'm on that for a bit. Part of the problem that I see is our milled rate was something like four and a half.
It's four now.
The rest of the county is a lot less. So we did get lowered to four.
Right.
But still, the rest of the county is less, so you have to convince the rest of the county to absorb some of us to lower our rate.
Well, that's not because they're gonna absorb us. They can absorb all the property, all the, yeah, the whole.
I just, I got an email from one of your neighbors this week.
Yeah.
And they were up in arms, and I said, let me take a look at this. And I looked at that. Whoa. So I went to Ellen McLaughlin, the fire chief of Greater Naples, and everybody is under the impression, including I was, that it's just POI that's getting that four mil rate. The problem is, as he explained to me, this district is eight hundred and four square miles.
Yeah.
And it's all covered by that milled rate called Ochapi. You are among the chosen two that have the big house and the heavy fire tax. And that's how they do it. They go by strictly by your assessment, but it's the entire district. It's not just POI. And actually, it goes up forty-one as well. It's a very weird map. You can look it up online. I just did it this week.
So like Briggs Road, those people pay for?
It, they, they, he told me, everybody's tried.
Trinity.
Four. Yeah.
Briggs Road, I don't think they're in our district.
No, it's whoever's in the district.
Briggs Road's right by the, um, nursery.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
But the map is online.
But the other thing that concerns me, and I don't know the answer. I don't know if many of us are aware of pill payment in lieu of taxes. There's a lot of the land around here that the government has, and the government pays a discounted rate. Now, if the government is paying the same mileage for fire, I don't.
Right.
Because that, that money went into the general fund.
Yeah, it doesn't even come to us, right?
But the other thing is the cost, the cost of getting Greater Naples fire equipment out here to do fires, and, and it's where we're located. So everybody thought, including me, that it was how far they had to travel, the cost of permanent people on staff, and that it was only POI, but it's not. It's that whole big swamp district. So, we just, that, that.
That's why I wondered if we were gonna be incorporated.
That we're under the county.
Right, that's right.
Still might be a separate district, Ochapi.
Even with Greater Naples keep.
They're, they're, uh, maintaining us. They're servicing us.
Yeah.
But we're not part of them yet.
Right.
All right, I thought maybe we paid something to that.
Any other questions on the financials?
Financials, okay.
Okay, so we need a, uh, motion to accept the financials.
I'll put forward a motion to accept the October financials I presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, you've got a copy of Chris's, uh, field report. And, uh, you received that, uh, Ray and Michelle, you'll get that, uh, under separate cover. And when you see something from Chris Pepin, he's sending that to you. Anyhow, uh, uh, you've got that report, and, uh, it's, it's, he always submits a pretty comprehensive report. And, uh, some of the things, what the, the board has always authorized is Chris will send, uh, one of his, uh, maintenance people out once a month, and as long as it's under five hundred dollars a month, he just picks up trash. They take care of little things, uh. So, uh, the list was just so long of things that he's identifying three or four months ago, and then the board authorized that. Uh, the list is much more manageable now. So, um, are there any questions on anything that, uh, you see the, uh, Robert's proposal is on page twenty. And we didn't see it, but there's the amount thirty-six fifty-four to prune the hundred and seventy-two palms. But, uh, we haven't got it, but you have approved it not to exceed, uh, thirty-seven hundred dollars. The, uh, curbing, uh, that's been addressed, and you see that that's also right above there at, uh, one fifty-seven K's Drive and one twenty Wilderness Drive. Uh, we've got some sidewalk, uh, that has been, you know, damaged and looks bad. I don't know if, uh, Robert can clean the roadway lighting, but those heads are looking pretty bad. And we'll ask him if he can next time they get it. Yeah.
Are those LCs?
He would. No, they're not LC.
They're not.
The L, LC.
LCs.
Yeah.
They're not?
No. No, they're, they're, uh.
Why is that asking? George, it's COVID.
Yeah, they're mercury vapor, I believe.
Okay. No, and LC EC, the.
Oh, LC EC is the, is the pump provider.
But they don't maintain them?
They maintain them, yeah.
Yeah, they should. They should.
Because according to COVID, it's all, they come, LC EC fixes all the stuff.
Right. And that's part of the CID's contract. They maintain them. But Orca Coal pays for the upgraded lights, the difference between a normal concrete pole and the decorative poles.
So I'm just saying, I just knew, my own experiences, that they'll come, you know, to maintain them. Not once, I guess, yeah, they do balls, and they're very good. You have popper.
I, I don't know if it's specifically a question needs to be made to LC EC to come on out and do that.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, will they? If a ball goes out, then they, 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 I don't know, it'd be a question to ask.
Yeah, that, uh, we could do that. That's, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, I think it would come.
Could cause lights to heat, maybe, you know, shorten the.
Yeah, they're pretty user-friendly about this.
I, I think you may even ask them why you got them, if they got a program to upgrade those to LED.
Yeah, uh, FPL does, I know.
I know FPL does. They're doing it automatically.
No, that's a great idea.
Oh, they're bright. The ones they've been replacing are almost too bright.
Yeah, that's the complaint we've been getting. Uh, we did, and then did Bellicaro, which is one of our communities we went through, they, we did get them to put up some shields.
Yeah.
Where they're not in the, but they're very bright. That's been a complaint. Do you want us to see if they're, if they've got a program?
Yeah, I think we should.
Check on the program. Check on, check on the shields, too.
Yeah.
Because I know the people across the street from me, it lights up, it looks like the sun's on the front of their house all night.
Okay.
Maybe they could go a little lesser wattage.
Yeah.
How's Elliot? It doesn't have to be.
Sometimes I got the ability to do that, too. I, I sit on a lighting device report up in Benita.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can reduce the wattage. So. Oh, it is a great idea.
Yeah, and you saw that, uh, when Chris was out here, he saw a black bear.
Oh, yeah.
Two of them. Well, he's got, uh, he's got a picture of them.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You can't, you can't leave your garbage. Nobody puts their garbage on the ground because he knocks them all down.
Yeah.
Now, like my street.
No, he was right across the street from me yesterday, that house, that empty lot.
Right?
Yeah, right there.
Candy hot dogs.
My little dogs.
Oh, no, they're totally not aggressive, these guys.
No, they're very cool.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments or requests for Chris to do?
Did they cut that grass back by the airfield yet? I thought they were responsible for all.
I, I said they were.
Okay.
I talked to him. Why, has it been done?
I think everything moved now.
Okay.
It's on the last page.
Last time I was there, they did.
Yeah, we have a, uh, developer that's been talking to us now about that property, another one. Not, uh, the last guy that seems to have fallen off the earth. But we have another one that's talking to us, and, uh, he asked about that. He said, not if it's been cut, but I guess he saw the airplane club out there, you know, what do they got going? I said, well, you know, we can get them out of there. I think it's a thirty-day, uh, notice that I have to move their operations. But, uh, they're supposed to keep it, and that you're saying that it looks good.
Yeah. How often do they mow it? How often do they suppose to mow it, do you know?
I don't know. Just on a heat.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. If anyone ever has questions or you see something, you know, let us know. Uh, mosquito spraying, uh, he's down to two days a week right now. And, uh, last time I talked to Chad, uh, yesterday, he said that, uh, they might be ready to stop it altogether. It just, you know, the counts are really low.
Yeah, it's got sad.
Yeah.
No, it's been good. And continuing on, right?
Yeah.
Really good.
I know, but, well, they're using, they used a different product this year.
Yes.
It killed the larva, too.
Oh, it's working.
Yeah, uh, and you guys actually bought both products, uh, where he's kinda alternating that. So, uh, yeah, Chad's doing a really good job, less expensive than.
Oh, great.
You know, what we had before, so.
You had to bring up the debt that's still using the same foot, it's on the flat trailer.
Yes, well, you guys replaced it and just, uh, Mitch just fixed up the trailer that carries it. So we had problems with that, but it's a fairly new machine.
Oh, okay.
Sprayer. I think that was replaced two years ago.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. No more than three.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
You have the other one, bro.
Okay, uh, if you have anything for Chris, get ahold of me. Uh, engineer's report.
Okay, the, the one thing listed there is the repair of the Sunset K, uh, sidewalk damage. And I've been able to contact one of the two people that are doing the building out there, and they did go ahead and post some signs out there to help that. Uh, I'm trying to get in touch with the other builder that's out there. It's an owner, owner builder, and they've been very difficult to contact. Uh, I've reached out on, during the week, and also on a Saturday, you can reach out and catch them, but it hasn't happened.
Can I just say one thing? When I was building my home, you know, along that block, uh, I was never contacted by anybody. And my builder made a lot of mistakes, and his attitude was, it was my problem. I didn't get my CL, and I had a call from the county, someone knew me, and asked if that was my home, and that's how I turned out about it. I didn't get my CL. I didn't open myself.
Your steps, right?
Oh, yeah, my steps. I had to redo the whole front of the house, fifteen thousand dollars.
Excuse me, so you got a couple of. Yeah.
So I wonder, should the landowner be comped?
Well, as far as, uh, the, the building permit itself, uh, I, we would not have any access to the building permit except through the online system. Now, anybody can go and look at a building permit online with the county, and it's just a matter of going to the building department's website, logging in through the portal, and then you can type in either the owner's name, the address, property parcel, and then you can actually start looking at the building permit itself to see if there's some issues, if software harders been issued or whatever. Uh, but as a district, we really don't have any way of, or responsibility for monitoring those type of things. Uh, where our concerns would be, like, it's the sidewalk, uh, making sure that the drainage esements and so forth are protected. Those, those would be things that we would be looking at.
I think the concern here was it looked like part of that home to get built in the swell.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I can talk to that right now. Yeah, I, I think there's a memo that was sent out on that. And we did look at that, and the, the house itself is not being built in the drainage esement. Uh, as you may be aware of, that those drainage esements are a little bit unique, that it goes to the property line, and unfortunately, the property line is out of the canal also. Uh, so it reduces the effective use of that drainage esement. And again, this is the one property owner that doesn't seem to be responsive to my phone calls. Uh, so we, we still need to catch up with them. I'm gonna go out after our meeting today and see if I get lucky and find somebody out there. And, uh.
Working on the house, one seven four.
Okay.
Is it a builder or is it a private individual?
The one I, the one, the one's a, the, the one's a builder, and they've been very cooperative as far as being able to contact and talk to. The second one's an older builder, and.
Doing it himself.
Pardon?
Owner builder doing it himself or an owner in the building?
I think they're subcontracting everything out to somebody.
So they're contracted.
Yeah, but they, the permit is pulled in the name of the owner builders.
That's odd because they're working on both at the same.
Oh, it's the same con, okay, good. Well, I could, thank you for the information. Now, now I can do a little more chasing.
Yeah. In fact, I think the builder or representative, representative of the builder lives, you know, a block you are, but it's locked into you, just like they live on that block.
It's the same Joe or something?
Joe, that was next door to me.
Yeah, Joe.
Yeah.
He was next door to me. You haven't been able to get ahold of him? No, I've been able to get ahold of, of Bill, and then Bill sent me on to Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the permit's actually in Bill's name. There's the builder.
Yeah.
Uh, the other one, though, is, is an older builder, like I said. Uh, but it's, thank you for telling me, though, that Bill's also, uh, Joe's also doing the building there.
Pretty sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Of both lots? No, he's just doing one.
No, I think he's doing both. Dirk came in at the same time.
He's got the lot across the street from you, the corner lot, the one on the other side, and now he's got three gone. That's a fourth one.
That one, I don't know who that one is. Okay, that's the owner builder one.
It's funny they go together.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do, I'm, I'm trying to do some more follow-up with that.
One seventy-five, except the second one. I believe he lives in Golden Gate State, the owner.
Okay, that makes sense. There was an address in Golden Gate, but I'm not getting any kind of callbacks or anything.
I go there all the time. I do.
Yeah, if you could, yeah, yeah, let me give you my card, and then they can contact me and.
Just send it to the detective agent.
But, but I don't understand, this is in the back. It, there's only, we only have twenty feet from the property line in the back? Is that what it is?
The property line's in the water.
The property line's in the water. I get that. We were, I think you're looking at this sketch here. I don't know what I'm looking at. Uh, this is the second page back, uh, where it says witness pins. Those are on the upland, and the actual property line falls out of the canal. And then from there, there's the twenty-foot easement is road from the property line into the property. So basically, if you're lucky, you get half the effective area of your drainage area. See, I thought it used to be twenty-five feet front and back. Well, that may be the setback itself, the building setback by the building code. Right. Yeah, and it's, easement is something different. It's, it's, it's only twenty. Okay, so that's what I don't understand. If, if it's a twenty-five foot setback, how, how can you be in the swell like that? I mean, there's, that was my most concern when I built my house. I did it owner builder, and there's no way I would have been put the building. Yeah, like, you know, I couldn't, I mean, I went, I think I kept myself afoot out of it, but. That, that's the smart thing, is to make sure you got a little extra, oops, in construction. But, uh, that, that just doesn't look right. Yeah, yeah. But, uh, the building itself appears to be outside the drainage esement. Uh, I, I'm not gonna talk as far as the building setback from the property line. That's, that's a building department issue. Okay, so. And this is. So we're talking two different things? Correct. There's a building setback, and then there's also a drainage esement. The drainage esement is something the district has control over. Building setback is something that Pioneer County deals with.
So looking, let me get the building permit, because my neighbor built the house. Everything looked fine. We went on vacation, came back, happened, then it put a swelling full way. So then the land erosion and everything. They're so close to the edge. Drainage. Does that show whether there's gonna be a pool or some pool in that structure?
There's a pool in that structure, yeah. So there should be nothing else coming back up, up there. Yeah, I just do that. I believe the plans didn't show that. I looked at the building, in the board. Yeah, the, the plans were actually in the building, uh, in the, uh, permit board.
Yeah.
Too often they're not, but, uh, in this case, there was, uh, I have a few photos of it. But it looked like that photo's gonna be in the east end, it's gonna be, you know what I mean? They, they should be okay as far as we got, I think, this well, but, you know, I think we've got. Oh. We, we, we've got the room.
Okay, uh, but you're gonna monitor that.
Correct.
Make sure that it doesn't impact, because that drainage swell's not just the whole, it's the whole area.
It looks like the county changed their height by, because that, that base, that house, high.
Correct. There, there was some changes to the FEMA codes over recent years. It bumped everything up. Yeah.
Is that gonna plus the neighbors?
Uh, again, it, it's a matter of getting the drainage to that rear property line so that it's able to hit it at swell that eventually discharge.
A lot of people are talking about the piles of dirt that are out there. Obviously, they elevate the site. That's not really a CID thing, right?
No, no, no.
That's not the property.
It doesn't become a CI, CID thing, it's still, it's, it's.
Anything else, David?
Uh, no, unless there's some questions about anything.
Okay, so, uh, those esements are gonna be in the center of each home there, on Sunset. So it's gonna, it's gonna have to be at a set level going back to the east, right?
Correct.
Right about where those houses are. Correct. The, 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 uh, development plan, uh, the original development plan sets an elevation to the bottom of that swell.
Right.
And that, that is, that needs to be maintained, and also all the time. That's what I'm talking about, the sign. Right. Road back. Correct, okay.
Uh, Dan is in support right now, uh, on the prep act situation. Uh, and we had a conference call. David participated in that, uh, myself, uh, Ron Benson and, uh, and Dan. And, uh, they're going to dismiss that, uh, prep act. And, uh, for sixty days, and give us an opportunity to kinda sit down and see if there's some middle ground that comes back through the board for consideration. But right now, um, you know, it is being taken out of the court for sixty days.
Can you explain that? Prep Act is doing severance trend, right?
No.
What is?
Prep Act, uh, basically has, uh, their suit is against, uh, the most recent assessment, uh, reallocation. And, uh.
This is the boat.
This is the boat guy, right?
Okay.
And so, you know, they're, they're suing the district, uh, for whatever reason, because they don't think it's fair, so.
We, uh, what we, we.
Oh, Dan just, uh, Dan, you want to, uh?
I thought.
Yeah, he just, just popped in.
What was the question? Because I, I was on the phone, and for some reason.
Let me, let me make sure I got to. To video, video, should be fine.
Yeah, I, I hung up on the phone. Can you hear me on this? Can you hear me?
Okay, how about now? Yeah, I, I unplugged it. It's gonna go off of my, uh, computer.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, Dan, you might have to call in.
I think he's muted.
No, he's not. I, I'm showing him that he's muted. Uh, I can't hear him either. Okay. There you go.
Let me try calling in again because I.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine.
You can hear me now?
Go. Yep, we can hear you. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically what they're complaining, what they're complaining.
We're getting feedback. We're getting feedback.
Yeah, we're getting feedback, uh, from your computer. Yeah, let me try calling in. Okay. That doesn't help work. Well, he's calling, and, uh, David, do you have anything to add to that?
No, nothing. No, I'm not. Uh, and, none, uh, no. There may be a bunch of people calling. I got an email earlier about, I think it's three o'clock, it's somebody, Scott.
Yes, Scott and, uh, Ron are meeting, yes.
Okay, how's it going?
Okay, you're there, Dan?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you guys hear him? Michelle, can you hear him? Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so they're, they're basically making two complaints, one being that the process that we undertook was improper. That they didn't get the required notice. I don't believe that. The second complaint they're making is that the substance, the actual amount of the ERCs that were portioned to the property was incorrect. And there, I know Ron can justify what we did. You know, he's, he's done it before for me in court and he's a good witness. We don't have a problem there. So what we want to do though is try to work something out with them because they're looking at making some additional investments down at the port also. And, you know, they want to have a way to make it work for them financially in the earlier years where it's not going to be generating the revenue that they anticipate downstream. So, yeah, listen, they have to say and bring back a proposal to you within the next sixty days that will give us, uh, you know, a chance to potentially work with them if there's, if we're not too far apart from the very beginning. So probably what I'll need you to do is schedule for your December meeting, an executive session. And, uh, you know, we'll try to, try to have that to where we, we can discuss where we're at settlement wise, uh, at that meeting.
Okay. The what we'll do is see what they've got and if it's something that we can discuss, then, then that, uh, that's a good thing. Uh, if we go into the executive session, it's just with the board and there is the cost of having a, uh, stenographer here. So, um, but we'll get with Dan and if needed, we'll go ahead and do the advertising and, and take care of it at the time. But, uh, right now that's the issue and they have, today was the hearing and so that, uh, we've lost some time if nothing else.
Yep.
Okay, Dan does that, uh, right?
Yeah, it's up that we did cancel the hearing. They consented to the, uh, order setting aside the, uh, default. Uh, we don't have to have a judge hear it. I'm, I'm just, I'm uploading an order to him this morning and that'll be signed per forma and, uh, we'll be good to go.
Okay. All right, um. Sorry about that.
Feedback on his end.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm on, I'm on.
Uh, Dan, thank you. Any questions of Dan? No, uh.
We couldn't, uh, that's from the county as far as agreement to.
I think their hands are full right now with the demolition and, you know, they want to get that taken care of, but they haven't gotten back with us.
Have they updated you on that?
Yeah, they, they've been, they've been, uh, keeping us pretty much in, in the loop. They're project people. Yeah, and, uh, so they, they still say that they're going to, uh, they've let the contract and that, uh, it should be tore down by the end of the year is what they're saying. Good day?
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me? And that includes the dump?
Yes.
Who's doing?
Uh, a local firm, yeah, yeah. It's a big firm, but they're, they're local.
I don't think. I know they did over a million square feet over this year. It's a lot.
Yeah. Okay, and then, uh, as I said, we have, uh, another firm that's expressed some interest and, uh, they, their idea is to use it more for RV storage as opposed to a, a physical RV park. But we'll see about that. So there's three people, three developers now. None of them have said that, uh, they're no longer interested, uh, and maybe they have by not giving back with us, but. Yeah.
I think the way, you know, seeing people leaving, wait to see the hotel come back, I'm sure.
I think that's a lot of it.
Once it's gone, they'll be getting involved.
Okay, um, as far as the invasive vegetation, uh, on the empty lots, uh, we've been getting good responses from people, uh, and, you know, but we will go in, we sent them, uh, drop dead letters and, uh, but we've been, they've called us and said, you know, we've recommended Soto to take care of it, uh, but they, some of them have used their own, uh, landscaper, but, um, we've, we've had responses from almost everyone.
Yeah, if, if we're not seeing any action, would they turn it over to the county?
Yes, and that, in the letter that we sent them said, that's what we would do. And we gave them a certain deadline. I, I'm not sure what the deadline was, but, uh, we gave them a deadline. And if it's not removed or if they have, if they call us and say, hey, listen, my contractor can't get out there till December, okay, that's fine. But, uh, first of the year, if there's anything left there, we're, then we're going to call code enforcement in. Okay, uh, that gets us to the meter changeout program and, uh, you guys have received everything. You have a recommendation from, uh, the engineer and, uh, which was confirmed by the, uh, rest of the board. The, the question we have, uh, and we're concerned about is that, uh, we've demanded that, uh, the, the preferred vendor being Ferguson out of, uh, Southwest Florida, uh, well, it's a national firm, but they have offices here. And our concern was that the solid state, solid state was the meter that we preferred. And, but, uh, using Ferguson who is local, they have somebody in Naples, Mitch has a long-term relationship with them. And, uh, so the committee was very confident that they would provide a good meter that they would stand up to. The biggest concern that we've had since that we haven't been able to get a written verification from them, we have from Waterworks, but not from them, that they will guarantee the irrigation meters and half of our meters are irrigation meters. So want to make sure that they give us something in writing and, uh, you know, the local reps say, oh, no problem, no problem, but we want it in writing.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what we would, uh, we'd like to proceed on this and, uh, the recommendation is to go with Ferguson. But, uh, if you're comfortable, we would have a motion contingent upon receiving documentation verifying that the meters are, are, uh, the warranty is still good.
Now, this is water meters for the whole property?
Yes.
Brand new water meters for everything?
Everything.
Are they warranted?
They would be solid.
From the manufacturer?
It's called a solid state meter.
Yeah.
Uh, the other type of meters is called the positive displacement five meter. That's what's currently in the ground. Uh, so, yeah, the question is whether the solid state meters, whether they can stay, whether, whether the irrigation water would, would, uh, be detrimental to the meter in some way, it's not a warranty.
Hmm.
Uh, if, if you come back and say we can't warrant it, you know, the fallback may just go ahead with positive displacement meters just on the irrigation side.
Yeah, because that could be a big build downstream.
Yeah, the other option, if they can't warrant it, is to go with the other company, which is actually a cheap solid state meter.
Yeah, but I don't know if that's going to cure the problem. It's, it's solid state or the other one. And the other one might hold up better to the environment it's in.
Well, the other company has given us in writing that they'll guarantee it for irrigation water or portable water.
Oh.
Uh, I would, I would think it'd be not, uh, an issue, but would just keep that warranty on.
Yeah.
Do you like one over the other?
Uh, you, you know, the, the meter should be the same between the two companies.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just that warranty is for the.
Yeah, so that's the key.
Yeah, well, and, and, uh, Russell sat on that committee and, and he has felt, voiced the, uh, support for a solid state as of the positive displacement because there's no moving parts. Uh, Mitch has said the same thing and he supports solids. Uh, from our standpoint, you just prepare your bills and we want to get a, a, uh, accurate readings. And the history is phenomenal because you can't imagine how many calls we get.
Oh.
And so then we say, well, if it goes through the meter, it's yours. But if we can sit and say you had a spike on the thirteenth of the month at two o'clock, typically go back, say, you know, oh, yeah. Uh, we had our sprinklers on or whatever.
Mitch.
Yeah, well, the only reason we took, um, the owners and I kind of recommended Ferguson over, uh, Waterworks because Waterworks is all solid state. But Ferguson has a local representative.
Ah, that's big.
We can be right there.
Yeah, I'm with it.
Get him right here if there's a issue. That was the only reason. Uh, if they can't warrant both solid state, then I'd be going with Waterworks.
Mm-hmm, I agree with him. Which one's going to give us these headaches four years from now?
The, the solid state.
Okay.
Those are problems. Plus our, our, you told them about Water, Waterworks, right? You told them about how clean our, you know, did you have to give them any chemical analysis or any?
All the chemicals that we put into the water, uh, are like P A, anything of the.
We gave them the P A in the Florida version. And that's the only thing. Ferguson, that, the sample.
Uh?
Also then there, also then there was.
Part of them.
Yeah, yeah. They didn't. The, the solid.
Sure.
The Waterworks is out of Avon Park, which isn't horrible, but it's, it's not like having a representative, you know, that's twenty minutes away.
Ferguson's just how your county's country.
Yes, they.
And Marco Island.
Oh. I'm off alone.
I don't think they got Marco Island.
I thought they.
There isn't a meter down in Marco. Uh, but, yeah, Ferguson is the big player.
In Southwest.
And they're local, that's a big, if they have to warranty it, right, because it's signed in blood.
Now, the Marco, I was there, but it was beating me. I was over there. He had to go to the meter with a line. We don't do that, right? We're just driving by.
Drive around. Yeah, and they're switching to an automatic green type system also.
But you can go to the meter, like if you look for it, you can go to the meter and take the mark on, boom.
I'll just take your phone.
Yeah.
I love that.
Because what I gave you fifteen months or two years or something, as far as Waterworks, guys were saying, it was really bad. Yeah, so especially on the meter, you're really old, you know, you're.
Oh, sure.
The residents aren't going to like it.
Yeah, we.
Waterworks over that. It's a big we need as they age slower.
Yeah, and, and it'll go both ways. There's people that are getting huge bills that we have no explanation of why it's so big. Uh, and we've just taken the position, the water goes through the meter, it's your problem, but we're, we're going to bill off of the meter.
I only have one request. Can I be the last to get a new meter?
Mitch is.
You're going to be there first.
So, uh, we had in the packet of information that you received, uh, you have a copy of a budget that we put together. That's still within the budget, uh, that we had initially for just the meters. And this, uh, is for the solid state meters. It's for the, and Mitch reduced his contract for the installation of these meters. So, and then it's our time, which isn't, which is the least of that, and then some time for the engineer.
No, I didn't make my trip. I had a banana thinking that.
What page is that on?
Good work, man.
That, uh.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it a separate memo?
Yeah, it was a separate memo that, uh, but I thought it was in the packet too. And, but there was a budget we had, uh, not to exceed all these by the, by both Mitch's people and our people. And we reduced it. The difference of the two bids, uh, we, we just went in with a thousand meters when we did it. But it's, there's eight hundred and eleven meters that we have. And so that we bumped them up with, Mitch would have a few on the shelf. We didn't want too many on the shelf because both of the vendors recommended against that, uh, because you don't want your warranty running on something that's on the shelf. But we do want a few just in case, right, Mitch?
And then like.
Uh, yeah. And, uh, so I think the.
Cal, that number reflects eight hundred and twenty-five.
I would assume it's lit, but I don't know.
If I recall, my battery life is twenty years, twenty years.
Jesus, it's got to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty years?
Yeah, ten years, a hundred percent, and then every year after that it drops.
Probably the better than it costs most of the.
Yeah, sure. Still, wow.
So, um, uh, I'm sorry about that, but there, there was, uh, we had a not to exceed for the engineer, which Ron had agreed was, uh, ten thousand. Ten thousand, yeah. It just, we didn't know. And then we put fifteen percent contingency, sorry, because you don't know what's going to happen. I think our fee for doing the conversion of all the data records and I've got to bring somebody in, a data entry clerk, uh, that would be thirty dollars an hour. Uh, maybe not at all.
Yeah, if, if something pops up, some oversight, whatever needs to be done. Uh, and I think too, we, we got the prices probably better. So also if you have the larger meters, one inch or one and a half inch meters, that would do not surprise me there.
So, uh, and Mitch's fee, like I said, was sixty dollars a meter times eight hundred and eleven. Uh, and then our fee was about six thousand dollars. And that's what not to exceed. It just, she estimated it'd take two hundred and fourteen hours. And if it's, if it takes that, then obviously it would be less. And like I said, fifteen percent, but even with all of those costs, initially when we, uh, budgeted it, we looked at three, a third of a million dollars, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars was what we presented and it's below that.
I thought it was two seventy-five.
Yes, I think that's a total price is two seventy-five.
And that'll come down a little with the savings, with the efficiency rate.
Yes, well, and.
Yeah, I mean, so that's going to bring it down too. Mitch, did you look at this? Can you see all that? What's going to break first?
Well, I think the bridge is going to be, the fact that the water is going to be, it's going to be accurate now. There's so much loss for us.
Yeah.
In every utility I've been involved with that went through the AMR meters, the loss of revenue was.
Yeah. What's the life expectancy of the worst part here? And what's going to break first as far as like, um?
Solid state.
Nothing.
A solid state electric.
Everything's good. Doesn't need anything. And the water dampness isn't going to affect it.
Not as much.
Okay. So that's good. That's good. And you got to do it anyway. I mean, the stuff's.
You should be careful.
Yeah.
Yes, you need to make a motion, what I.
Yeah, you got to have the warranty first.
Well, what you would authorize is, uh, a, a bid, if you're ready to move, is a, towards the bid to, uh, Ferguson for the solid state meters, uh, at a not to exceed amount of two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. That's, uh, could actually be less than that. Uh, the two hundred and three thousand was for the thousand meters. We're going to reduce that to eight hundred and eleven and they said that wouldn't affect their pricing. And, uh, make that contingent also upon receipt of a mix, uh, warranty provisions on the irrigation meters.
Do they get a, should they have a deadline for when the job's completed? Should we give them a deadline?
No, he's.
Oh, you're doing it? Oh, no problem. Where are your deadlines? We're going to watch you. Okay, all right, okay.
Cal, it's, Cal, it's Nancy. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, um.
Cal, it's Nancy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't see it in there either, but I know we sent it out. I, if you want to. Yeah, I don't see it in there either, but I know we sent it out. I, i- if you want to wait, we can delay it, uh.
Garden.
Yeah, it's prime time. Uh, now, the other advantage you're gonna get when Mitch goes in and changes these out, right now you've got a lot of meters that are covered up. You can't see, they're got bees in them, and they're going to take their vector truck, and they're gonna suck that out and clean that out so you can have a nice new installation. And the meter is a hundred percent guaranteed for ten years, and then every year it goes down maybe five percent after that. Uh, and they guarantee the accuracy of the reading too.
Correct.
Anything you wanna add to that, Mitch?
Can you have any question? So what happened, the contingent of the fact that Ferguson cannot warranty those solid state meters? Do we go with Waterworks, which is all solid state?
Yeah, which if, if you.
I wanna go to the, oh, I have that on the only one here. I mean, the, uh, the, the other one has, has been in the other P D blower part.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want, I wanna say.
If they can't provide it, then we go Waterworks.
I think we, what do you think? I think, I mean, we need this warranty.
Right.
And I don't think you're comfortable with it, you know?
Well, well, if we don't do something, then we're wasting it.
Right.
We're losing another month. It could be, it, blocking revenue with it.
Yeah. We have some meters out there. The plan is that immediately, once you award this and we get the warranty from Ferguson, then immediately Mitch is gonna order fifty, and he's got at least fifty meters that are, that are, they have to be replaced. And they'll operate them manually, uh, read them, which you can do, and then he'll start getting going the changeover and you thought it'd take you more than two months?
The way it works, they only stock twenty and fifty meters, both, both companies. Once you place the order, they'll release the twenty and fifty, fifty. We'll install those, we'll go ahead, leave them electronically, get software, get everything ready, get trained. That way, we can install them all, both were up and running.
Yeah, Mitch, you didn't have a problem with either company.
I don't, my personal opinion, I prefer the meter of Waterworks, not prefer the, the size, and I, your local. I mean, that's my own personal opinion, but.
Lots of pros and cons between.
Of course, but I, I rely on Dave. That's what he does.
So, uh, if you approve of the model and contingent upon receiving that warranty, and, uh, run it by the attorney to make sure that he's comfortable with it.
Can Waterworks, you know, uh, I'm not Waterworks, uh, Ferguson, Ferguson, can you let them know that it's contingent on that?
Oh, yeah.
That's key.
Yeah, I was gonna have him here today, but I told him if he can't provide it, there's no sense because we're not gonna award the contract without a warranty.
Right, okay.
So in fact, he's not on the line right now, so he's listening to what we're saying.
Let's ask him.
What is, yeah.
Uh, what are you gonna have? Have you got any data on the warranty? Here we go.
Yeah, hi, good morning, everybody. Um, yeah, I.
Do you have any other data on the warranty?
Yes, can you hear me?
He's talking. Oh.
I, I can hear you, Andrew.
I got my volume down, I'm sorry. Uh, can you? Just barely.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is that good? Louder, quieter?
No, it's on our end. Hold on a minute.
Okay.
There we go.
All right, Andrew, start over again.
Yeah, just, um, I wanted to say good morning. Um, uh, the water sample that I picked up, uh, from Mitch is at the lab. We should have it back. Obviously with the holiday next week, it's gonna slow things down. The following week, we should have the results. They will email those to me, and, uh, I will get those to the manufacturer. They will give me the okay, um, or, or they won't. And I, I, from what Mitch and I have discussed, I think we're gonna be okay here. Uh, but I'll get that to the manufacturer. They'll give me an answer, and, uh, as soon as I know something, I will get back to you. Uh, I, I'm sorry that the process is gonna take a little time, but, uh, I, I know that, uh, it, it's the best thing for everybody. So, um, if we need to do it contingent upon the approval, I'm a hundred percent okay with that.
But I mean, you know, it's.
I'm sorry, I missed that part already.
And you got Thanksgiving next year. I'd say we wait.
Yep.
Might as well just wait till we get everything.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll feel more comfortable. I wanna see it.
Okay, uh, we'll table this for the next meeting. All right, uh, and not yet, you've delayed this, so get your stuff together. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the extension. I will make sure you have everything and, uh, get it changed quickly as possible. Thanks so much, everybody.
All right, let's take this to the, uh, the two bulk proposals, and, uh, Trish, I don't know if you wanna jump in here at all, but, uh, basically, that, that's two proposals for the, uh, cable. And, uh, if the board has an interest in some type of a, uh, contract for, you know, you would issue a, uh, franchise to them, you know, that's not, that's gonna be an expense on your behalf. Uh, I think that now that you've got the two companies that have an interest, they can deal directly with the HOAs for each of the, uh, the community, but if you get involved, you're gonna have to, you know, get it extended to every home and pay a fee for every home. And that's just another charge at home, yes, that's.
Why are CenturyLink going away? We're gonna have no idea.
Well, they're both ready to come back. Both Summit and Comcast have an interest.
Can they use CenturyLink's stuff?
They should be.
Yeah, structure. So they have to kinda put on the wiring?
Yeah.
Uh-huh, hello federal.
But it's gonna have to be done.
Either way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But now let me ask you a question. I don't know the answer to this. We've got Comcast, it works fine. I've heard hard stories about CenturyLink, but you have a bunch of different entities over there across the street. How are you gonna get them all to agree on one carrier? We can't tell them, can we?
Right, they could either deal individually with the homeowner.
Yeah.
But they're going to have to have enough guaranteed business to come into the community.
Yeah.
To warranty their, their investment. Uh, so they can have an agreement with each of the individual homeowners associations, and some might, and some might not have service. Or they can go through the C I D, but somebody's gonna get that investment. And what you'd be doing is setting up a new utility, uh, for cable service.
Wow.
I mean, that's the way it should be in theory, but that's like herding cats. I don't, there's never gonna. Everybody's gonna have an opinion.
You know what the other condo associations are using for provider?
I don't, I know Catherine is, uh, some.
Your century.
Everybody?
A hundred ninety-two units with CenturyLink that, uh, we got the just continued notice effective March thirty-first that we're discontinuing our prison D dig.
Orchid Cove is the only one that has Comcast.
Yeah.
There's no Comcast down the other side.
No, but she's talking about CenturyLink.
Yeah, I know. Everybody's got CenturyLink. Everybody has access to it, but you, I mean, Orchid Cove is the only thing that has Comcast. There's no Comcast down the other side at all, is there?
No, but she's saying. Yeah, but you're saying the majority of units has CenturyLink, right?
All the units at Sunset, on Newport Drive, the website, nineteen buildings have CenturyLink internet and television. And CenturyLink is going away with prison D dig.
I see.
I don't know if you're still about that.
Doesn't move a bit today.
Does it feel about that?
Let me see.
This is more, we try to speak. Okay.
I need to take it over. Um, former residents of the management association when we got. That, that like, he has many bits for Comcast and many like, that's how Comcast, you do themselves a point one. And plus they can give all of them and it's not any. So they.
That's what I said.
Are horrible, uh, when we get it. Uh, I believe, yeah, that was, that was wrong. We gotta get a contract signed all month before we take it certain. So that they, and, and, you know, install it.
Sounds right, sounds right.
So, we're really, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to know some of these parties providing first, in order to, yeah, to see what, if it's, after I'm there. Good luck, uh, the guy here, I appreciate his, um, most, and, and. Those the moment, they use their home to stop, and it's not true. We're, I, I contact, some companies all through the tree, they have not, uh, get back, they're, they just can't follow track of it. They, uh, these both companies, it's right, they, it's, they got to delay, they, they've offered.
You know what, sir? I, I have a question for you. I want to just tell you something. We, we had a home in Key West, we lived there a long time. And it's like a box of rocks there, and it's crazy. But when Hurricane Woma came through, and when Hurricane Irma came through, we're four feet above sea level down there. There was only one phone company that worked both times, Verizon. And there are always. And I'm no fan of Comcast, but I'm a bigger fan of Comcast than somebody new, because they've upgraded considerably. I'm not a fan of Comcast, but we've got Comcast here, it's good, as good as it's gonna be. Uh, Comcast is the, the provider in the Keys in the hurricane, four feet above sea level, and it's good. My suggestion would be, I'd strongly urge you to use mom apple pie baseball rather than experiment. That's number one. But number two, my question is, and I don't know the answer to this. You have a private home over there, you have a bunch of different condos, and a bunch of different associations. In your opinion, can you get them all to think the same way?
Well, some, yeah, you could, but I'm not. This is the original negotiations, both Comcast and CenturyLink said that they didn't want to deal with the, with the association.
Right.
Wanted to deal with the master.
Right.
The master then negotiated a contract, but then the individual association had to sign.
Right.
And then, it's the name of, what I think, I'm not sure, they were, but again, if that, okay, Comcast, so, unless they can get very much, so.
It's not worth it, otherwise.
So, I think it's, I'll just say we did have a call.
Uh, no, they have responded, Jim. We have Summit.
Okay, so we have, yeah.
We've, I'm sorry.
We have to help.
Yes.
I also collect it too. There's associations from Stella Maris North that are also included on the contract with Sunset King on Newport Drive.
Yeah, see, that's a box, that, whoa.
But Stella Maris South has a different master, don't they?
Right, this Stella Maris North.
Yeah. So how many masters are there on there? How many master?
Association. How many master associations are there?
There's several. Some are in Haiti who have one.
Yeah. Stella Maris South has one.
I think Starkey also has some associations up north.
Yes, I'm not sure whether they have a manager.
I think they do.
We're not involved in that now, right?
So that was the hard thing, getting everybody on board.
Internet service.
Well, right, and what you can do is, if provided as bulk service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People has an interest in that, but if you do it as a bulk service, there's upfront costs.
Don't take it the wrong way, but what's in it for us?
Uh, the service, the service to the community.
The service to the community, like Water.
It takes water, yeah.
Everybody is complaining about the internet service.
Let, let's say somebody like scares the hell right out of everybody somehow, next door or something. And you say, look, you're not gonna have football in three months. You're not gonna have, whatever it's gonna take, you gotta agree on something right now. Okay, no playing, you can't change it, nothing, because everybody's gonna have an opinion, everybody. You're gonna take that away. What do you wanna do? This is what's gonna come. How possible is that?
What I propose is to take the two contracts and give them to the management company.
Yep.
They all, other associations.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that would be the best way to get them to. I think regardless, I can't do anything.
Okay.
What I mean, yeah.
Everybody's getting the same management.
Oh, that's easy.
Oh.
Right.
Yeah, we can't do it.
Okay, so.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't think.
Yeah, they're.
C I D provides a base out there, and then let's see if they will choose, and you can buy, use it if you want, and get it over sailing. I mean, if, if you're willing to do it, I, I think we haven't been able to say anything, we're, it's, supply gate, and then you guys do what you want with it. You know what I mean? I don't know.
But they're, they're gonna have to have a guaranteed.
Yeah, they're not gonna do it. They're not gonna do it unless they have a guarantee. That's the problem.
They're only gonna have one.
That's the problem.
They, they are gonna be guaranteed if they're the only person coming in. They're gonna be guaranteed. It's not gonna be right. They're gonna be guaranteed because that's all you're gonna have access to unless, because you're not even gonna have, essentially eliminating the internet service also, or just.
No, just TV, right?
Oh, just, oh, I bet they do.
I can, uh, jump in just for a second. This is, this is Chris.
C I D, does the C I D wanna get involved, all hundred or all eight hundred units that I think the contracts are about? Does the C I D might get involved with everybody in support? Or do you want to tell each individual, the person you're on your, that's the question.
That is the question.
Yes, yeah.
What would you do?
What can we forward, you know, what?
What do you think the answer is?
I can't answer that.
Which would you, how would you, as a homeowner, wanna see it go?
I can't, I don't know because I don't know about the contract, the, the, it all starts with the trust, what it's about. Three, four months ago, to see about end of service. If, the C I D now got the, and that's where we are now. Sunset, and Stella Maris, we're having, we're going, but we can't do anything, anything. It's, it's, I mean, it's, I mean, it's people working.
See, I as a homeowner.
You know, what, we're not, we, we were.
I as a homeowner, very frustrating. I have no choice.
Sure.
And the wiring in the ground has gotta be older than that.
But it's no good anyway, can't use it.
And I, I would like to see some modernization.
Sure.
But, you know, homeowners aren't as, pretty good group as the contract. What about getting T V through your internet?
Streaming.
Well, I don't like waiting, so.
Yeah.
You can't get over twenty.
I have no.
You can't, you only get about.
Direct T V, it's your center, there's, there's no cable on our side. There's there. At the hotel.
I do, also.
Right, but they won't understand.
Oh.
But the, 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 I had two of them, I'm complaining about the purpose of the internet because it keeps dropping off. Right, you know what, that's, 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 that's happening in most homes, so we're gonna do an upgrade. So they could just upgrade your system, and then what happened was, they do that, you need to. Their systems. And I remember a report doing this. I remember once, once. Comcast stood up. So if you have three power outage, like. You do this. That's what they, that's what they, like, don't. You're really good. You're gonna be there. There were two owners that were waiting. I think they're gonna get off the dock. Go to the house. Or, or we're bothering them. It's not good. They upgraded their. And it's putting to power version. They have nothing for the.
So on that side, you know, come. But is that acceptable for the other, like, homeowners there? This is not acceptable.
I saw wires yet. Right. See, the problem is the cost of the wire. They committed want a whole town. They say we want Key West. We don't want three streets. We want all of it. Because we want to figure out our reference degree. Right? Over there is the reason we're a CID. It was already partially built. And there's a bunch of different homeowners association, a bunch of different condos associations. You're never gonna all agree. And I'm not being negative. What would I do? I'd say, here comes Comcast. This was come off. But we gotta guarantee Comcast. I think it's suicide. For this point, get involved with it. Unless you all want it. And I don't hear that.
How do we get through that?
Right, you gotta go through that public hearing.
I have a, I have a question. So you guys are discussing providing cable service over there.
Right.
Part of CID.
Yeah.
Function. Right.
And so we're a little hard here. Who pays for itself. Right. So why did I get into that conversation is?
Well, if we call Comcast, wouldn't it? So.
I would. CID is paying for it.
Right.
And, and so we're gonna be paying for it?
No, it'd have to be part of it.
Yeah, we already have. I mean, I'm not sure.
We work it out with Comcast. Yeah.
Yeah.
We work it out with Comcast, it's period. But I mean, that's not the problem. The problem is Comcast not gonna do it. Unless they get everybody. And I don't know how you're gonna get everybody over the holidays with COVID and everything else. The only thing you've got working for you is Nextdoor, to be honest with you. Listen to me again. I've seen it. You're gonna, if, if you don't get it, and, and you, and the other problem is you have people that aren't here. You're right. That's even a bigger problem. So if you don't get everybody's attention, all of a sudden, and say it's gonna be no more TV. The debt. And it's suicide, in my opinion. For this point, to take on another can of worms. Unless, unless you wanna do.
What if, uh, I mean, we've only looked at two options. The homeowners associations being the contractee providing the bulk to their individual or the CID providing it to everyone. What if we contact Comcast who already has a trunk line in here if they're servicing? And see what it would take to make it available. Oh, that's not, not a fire service. I mean, it's gonna cost, somebody's gotta pay for it.
That's right.
It would be a CID expense to run it throughout the community, then they would have to go out and sell their services to the individual.
Why not project this? Do that's.
Exactly.
The installation was gonna be free.
You know, people's ID.
Right. I mean, this.
No, that's.
Oh, I, I guess. Close ourselves for money. And get nothing out of it on a wish and, you know, that doesn't make sense.
Well, it, it, because it's a service that you're providing in your brain. I mean, that's, that's up.
CID.
Yeah. Let Comcast do it.
That's what he's saying. What he's saying.
Comcast is, oh, he's saying it's the ID.
No, no, no. He's saying we provide, we, we're gonna have to fit the, put the line.
Right.
We're gonna have to put the raw line for everybody.
So then.
Yes.
No, I do that.
Comcast.
Yeah.
They won't do it. They won't do it. I've been after them. Can you?
They won't do it. For the homeowners, is what I keep hearing. Unless they have every homeowner.
Yeah, don't take this the wrong way. We got enough holes to pour money in. Why on earth would we come up with the money to do that? With no guarantee of return?
Cause I'm in.
Yeah.
If Comcast, any of the service comes in, they will probably in a ten year contract. They will pay for the installation of everything and everybody's on a ten year contract. And it will be.
Right.
Nobody at any particular time is already have money for how this service is coming in. Because the contract is for the ten years. You're gonna afford it and we're charging you over time. So there's not, I don't see if the CID could find it over as far as. A contract. I don't see anybody other than the provider paying.
Right.
But there's still a guarantee. They're not gonna come in.
Right, that's the problem. You're not gonna get the guarantee.
Well, then we can say the CID doesn't want any part of it and send it back to Austin. We'll move forward. We have no problem with that moving forward. Whatever it is, we have no problem. I don't think.
I think.
The problem moving forward, we can see to know. Where.
I think the problem is, the problem I'm having, why? I mean this. Why do you need the CID involved when I'm telling the master do that instead?
Russ started this four months ago.
But that doesn't mean he was right. Like, the CID, why, why do we need to be involved in it? If we have to go through everybody across the street?
That's different CID investigation and that's what we argue.
Yes.
Is better to look at it all right, but if it's not the ID.
Right.
That's a great question. Until, until. Until it comes to the guarantee. See, the problem is it's real expensive upfront. It's front loaded. If you're Comcast. If you're Comcast and you wanna come here, you wanna guarantee a return. Now, if they, I'm not being facetious here. If they can canvass all your houses and will you sign this contract to go to Comcast for two years? Will you do it? If they can get enough of you, and I'm saying you because working Comcast, if they can get enough of you that it makes sense for them to spend all the money and labor to put in the line.
Why don't they canvass?
Then they'll do it. Right, because they're expecting that. The problem you have, you have, we have, from you now, is all of the residents are parts of different association. They're transient. They're not here year round. They're gonna wanna shut off for six months every year. And they're all gonna better idea what's gonna work. There is no way in hell. You're gonna get that work and get it put together in four months. Never mind. Get it done. It ain't gonna happen.
They need you. And I want to. And I'm part of a team. I don't think. For a.
Right, I think that's what everybody's.
But will they control for that?
No.
I have no idea. Because we don't know what you. Because. Four, rolling, like, three hundred units talking to you.
Nobody, nobody talked. Oh, gee.
Oh, they think you talked to them.
They talked to anybody.
Oh.
So they did not go out for four people. And did not propose all type of three hundred.
Yes. We did. Yeah, and Comcast didn't come back.
No.
There you go.
I have no problem with that.
Little companies.
I have no problem with that.
Then why are we talking about it?
I don't know.
I think, I think it's the question.
It had to be me somehow.
Yeah, the question that Catherine has raised is the question the board needs to decide. Do you want to proceed as a board knowing that there will be some expenses? Or do you throw it back to the homeowners associations?
Do we have an idea what the expense is?
Yes, gotta be monstrous.
I, I don't have it here, but it is, it is pretty heavy. I, we, we can come back with that. And make sure what Comcast is gonna do too.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We can't move forward until.
Okay, so we're just going.
Fine, you posed a question. Yeah, I know.
Uh, question is, do you wanna proceed, uh, knowing that you could have, and it's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Okay.
I see it. How else am I gonna get anything better?
Yes.
They have, you know, she's saying.
Every time.
They're in the packet.
And I sent the packet along.
Sure. Uh, send Chris a email, okay? Uh, he's listening, so he, he'll know. He'll get you one. So.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I believe Tony's gonna use his. Catherine, there, it's in the agenda packet.
Yeah, all day.
I'm not sure both of them are in there. I think it might just be the summit. They're both in there? Okay. Okay.
They're both.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's over a hundred thousand. I mean, cause.
Yeah, I. I.
I thought, essentially, everything. I thought that was all.
Mm-hmm.
Because now. And it would be, you know, that you have to have to pay bills and do anything. So. Right. If it ever gets to the point where we're probably gonna lose internet, then we have to look.
Okay, and what you can do if there is any interest in proceeding is get you a definite proposal for the, you know, to do the entire community for the next meeting. And we'll tell Comcast that they've got to give us something. I mean, Comcast is the one that makes the most sense because they're, they've already got service out here.
How about we do this? How about if we contact Comcast before the next meeting, December? Or we, we tell them what we wanna do, tell them where it is, ask their representative to come here.
Sure.
Let's do that. And let's see what they say. How's that? We're guessing. Let's see what they have. Let's ask them right here. You can ask them whatever you want. Yeah? Let's bring them right here and ask them and get their viewpoint. Let's do that. Okay? Let's take Comcast here and just say, here's our situation. What will you do for us? And how much is it gonna cost? And let's see what they say.
And we will.
That's fine.
Yeah, see what the viewpoint.
Yeah.
So let's, let's do a hundred, twenty, hundred.
Yeah.
And the only thing. Maybe I feel this, but the only thing is, it's for our whole community. We're not just condo associations. And I don't wanna lose track of them. We do have homeowners that are part of this community.
Sure.
And because we're smaller, doesn't mean we're not entitled to things.
Absolutely. That's the other thing. That's the problem.
No, no, I heard you said was you guys are. You know, move on with your life.
No, 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 no.
That's not how it should be.
No, what we're saying is you've got homeowners, you've got condos, you've got boats, you've got a hotel, and you have, but that's not the problem. The problem is you have no cohesion. Everybody's gonna have a different idea.
You gotta start.
I agree. So let's bring Comcast here and see what they have to say, and then everybody can ask them.
See, but. What I think she's getting at is that Orca Co already has it, but he also does.
Yeah.
That's not it at all. I just, let's bring them in.
Sir. That's, that's just how it came from.
Yeah, well, that isn't it. I think people have to forget. It's Orca Co, it's world. Yeah, well, we paid for it. And we all agreed on it.
I know it's true. I already paid for it. I already go out a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right. What, uh, what we will do is invite Comcast to the next meeting. We'll also ask them to, uh, submit a proposal for servicing the entire community. And we'll ask the other two, and then we'll give you a summary sheet where you can look at the numbers side by side and talk to Comcast who's already here and what can they do with.
Let's get them right here. See what they say.
Yeah, we'll get you options for total community and for no CID involvement. And that'll track them Comcast.
On the positive side, they're already here.
Yes.
So, you know, just wiring over there.
To go any further. They have solicited to grow.
Well, that doesn't. Yeah, I mean, Naples is. I mean, look at the aisles, look at all these places. What do they have? I mean, you know. That's right. That's right.
We have, all right, we have direct.
Okay.
Uh, new business. Any new business? Supervisors comments?
Uh, I've had a request. Right, right, yeah. I have a request for you, for you, pal.
Okay.
I did notice the. In your contract, the management company, company's contract, uh, you're entitled to an annual increase.
Yes.
That usually starts on October first. Uh, I think it says CPI is usually the increase, but it looks like that's what the increase was, three percent. Um. I don't remember that being brought up at a budget meeting, but then with COVID, our budget meetings.
Yeah, well, but when we just first presented and discussed the budget, I, uh, brought that out.
Yeah, I, I missed it so hard. Um. Let's see. Oh, and I, I'd like, I know we, uh, updated your contract, Soto's contract. Can, uh, I have finished one, because mine's all changes. Just a clean copy, please.
Uh. We did do that. The last revision, we're still waiting for Dan to put together the, uh, uh, the anti-bird amendment. Okay. Uh, anyone else? Michelle, anything? No? Yes? Okay, uh, audience comments? Okay.
Um, before your eye entrance. Both side monuments have been painted. The real estate office has been cleaned, along with seven of them being painted. Hours put on the wall, and they've been doing a very good job of keeping that looking nice. The main monument has had the Oscar nest up there for a couple of years. They haven't been there. Um, there's, the main monument needs to be painted, the, the inside monument. I would appreciate if the board would enter taking that, along with putting, uh, back. The embellishment that was down there.
We can get, uh, quotes for cleaning. Uh, the board was presented a year ago, two years ago. Uh, replacement of that embellishment, the, and you guys, you know, decided not to do it, but your finances are better now than it was.
All my friends.
Would you like to get that updated proposal for that embellishment on the sign? Okay.
Where's gonna paint? Did they paint the wall on Page Drive?
Yes.
The two walls? Yeah, don't they go?
Who owns the sign?
The ID? Yes, the ID owns the sign. That whole, uh, median right there with the landscape out front, too.
They think Lane did his roof on the real estate office. And himself. I think he paid to have that, that sun stream.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to see that back. Looks kinda empty now.
All right, we'll, we'll get a, a proposal for the next meeting on that.
Does anybody have a picture of the original one, or you wanna change it?
Well, I've, I've got.
With one of the, uh, proposals. Remember your services in the package.
Oh, the, yeah, we've got, I've got, uh, the original proposal and artwork that was done for that.
Yeah, that would look good. It, it looks terrible without it, for sure. Yeah, there it is, right there.
I'm almost positive that was in the, uh, records that was sent over to us from Severnham.
Now, there's nothing that goes above that. It's just the sign, and then the sunburst, and then there's nothing above it? There was nothing above it before? Yeah, that can't be, they'll do that.
That was, uh, it was expensive to have it made up initially. Yeah.
Really?
That was, uh, eight, nine thousand dollars.
It has to be strong enough to hold up to the.
Yeah. So it's especially made, so, but we'll, we'll get a quote, uh, if, if like it does it again, they did the original one. If they do it again, it might be.
Okay, metal?
This one, this is metal, yeah. Um, I have a question on our street signs. I'm on Sunset K, and it was off one day. Someone put it back.
Chris probably did it.
Yeah, but it's missing a screw, so it's still flopping in the breeze, so I think it's gonna come off again.
Yeah.
Sunset K.
Sunset K.
Page Drive.
Okay, anything else from the audience? Yes, ma'am?
My here. The new, um, meters, and it's an awful lot of sixty thousand we've gone to a monthly billing instead of two. And maybe having, uh, paperless billing, so. Uh, but I get the, access to the meter yourself, that we can see if we're having.
Hmm. Yeah, you won't have access to the meter data yourself. That's.
They'll be every month.
Yeah, they'll.
And you go on, like, four.
So we'll see if there's a problem with that.
And then maybe this. Half the time I don't get my bill anyway, so I have to go looking for it now.
Uh, I, I, I don't do this point, but I'll ask if.
Yeah, but then you see if something's wrong sooner. But the other thing I read on Nextdoor, we might have a new newsletter starting up. And I think when Jeannie did it, it was part of, it went out with the utility bill.
Yeah.
Wireless.
Well, no.
Electronic.
You get it in your emails.
Right, but what about the newsletter? Could you start that up?
Yeah, the newsletter is gonna be electronic, too. But let me ask you a question, and that's a good point. There's a lot of people here that don't have computers.
Well, I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. 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 Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, I agree with you, but, uh, there's a lot of people don't have computers or using.
Putting it, letting them merge together.
Yeah.
In other words, uh, the water utility bill knows you've signed up to get yours electronic.
Yeah.
But if this newsletter is to happen, which I hope it does. How would they know to send that?
Here, but it's, you know, I don't get a bill with the help. I think that's my luck. Everything comes to me, my people, and, uh, those mail this problem. But if there's a possibility to do that, we can go online.
Let me, let me check into that. Uh, it's, we could put on the bill, the, maybe the next bill, but whenever you guys approve it. We'll put on the bill that, uh, paperless, uh, billing is available, uh, contacted on the website. There'll be a signup sheet. Uh, you gotta realize, though, that any email addresses that we have are private information. They're public record, so.
Well, you can opt in or opt out.
Right.
Right. But if you opt in, and somebody says, we want all of your email addresses, uh, we've gotta provide them.
Right. Because it becomes public record, what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. It becomes a public record.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
This is, how, how, how did you bill Jeannie to put out that newsletter?
Uh.
The company, not Jeannie, but you know.
Yeah, it was, uh, it wasn't much.
No?
Yeah, no.
And how did she, she just got it?
She paid a hundred or two hundred dollars per, uh, she prepared it, she paid for the copies. She brought them down to our office, and then we stuffed them in.
And so she had a deadline and you stuffed them?
Yes, and then we charged her for the stuffing.
Okay.
I have a question about the water, the meters, like, um, I know it's a lot trying to be, they leak. It's like a diet for you.
All of that's the backload of dinner.
Yeah.
They're made, so, for example, if you have, say, five people in a condo, or whatever, everybody turns the shower on, and what, they turn it off. The back is gonna, the water will cause it to, very difficult problems. And then it should stop.
It, it's a little bit of its back.
And it's another one of those.
Okay.
But if it's, and it's, it's.
Anything else? They need a motion to adjourn? Okay. All right, uh, so need a motion to adjourn? Okay. They're ready to go. This is, uh, one of our longer meetings.
Yeah.